Wednesday, November 6th. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call votes.
Councilman Scrini is absent due to military leave. Councilman Livingston?
President.
Councilman Crans?
President.
Councilman Taylor?
President.
Councilman Papastra?
President.
Councilman Matso?
President.
President Scanlon?
President.
Six-year, one-absent Scrini.
Under the approval of minutes from October 23rd Business Meeting, Councilman Matso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand and ask for unanimous consideration for the approval of the minutes from October 23rd, 2019 Business Meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are holding a public hearing tonight for introductory ordinance 19-113 in ordinance amending the code of the city of Binghamton, Chapter 410, zoning to modernize zoning regulations and streamline the planning approval process. The last business meeting, we had a public hearing for this and we did not officially close the public hearing. So we're inviting people to come down to the meeting.
See none will move on.
Well, when it gets sloppy, it gets sloppy, you know? And this city's very sloppy in a lot of ways. But I'm gonna hear my man and I'll clean it up. Council, I think, to New York. Uh, I don't know what I'm talking about. I don't know what I'm talking about because there's no copy of ordinance 19-113. In fact, many, many times for 20 or 30 years, up there with the agenda was the legislation. And now, there isn't any copies available for the public. So, I'm just gonna talk because I don't have a copy of the legislation and, uh, Clerk Dank, Clerk Dugel, who are the names of the past that I can think of, they all provided. Getting very sloppy around here, very sloppy. So, sure, roll call votes, no passion, no zeal, nothing. So, I'm gonna guess what the, I actually was at the word session. The, uh, planning process doesn't need to be streamlined. There's a lot of, uh, stuff that comes out of the Planning Commission that doesn't come out here. Lot of stuff. And, uh, those folks are very amenable for public comment, public input. And, uh, you find out a lot about what these, uh, real estate operators are doing and let's face it. These people all know each other, they're all in various LLCs together. This is not a wide group of people. They wanna establish whatever real estate people wanna establish, cartel, that's what they wanna establish, they're wanting competition. And, uh, this, I believe, will enable them to do so. You know, the, I ran into Mark Newman and, uh, we had a nice little chat today. And, uh, what's interesting about Mark is he, you know, he'll talk to you, he'll answer questions. But I remember, and the futility of all this stuff, you know, I remember all the comprehensive plans and all the battles and the battle for reassessment. And up there about four or five years ago, the issue on the table was 15 Holly Street, whether they could expand that building as it was planned, as it was built for. And this was at a planning meeting and the late George Agle was back there, Mark Newman was back there. The people from Westchester County that owned 15 Holly Street, now those buildings have been sold. George Agle is dead, Mark Newman's father is dead. One of the principals in the 15 Holly Street project and the Doubletree, he's dead. But who was the loser in all of that? The city, the city. Because this city would've had, uh, a new addition to the building. You know, it's, this is something, this is really something. I mean, it's very sad to see, uh, people use the city. And, uh, you know, I don't have to worry, I don't have to worry because I'm one of the most open-minded people that will ever live in this city. Ever, ever. So, I think every person at this table should say, who exactly is going to be the benefit of this, of these changes? Because we were told back in the day of the West Side Neighborhood Association, I don't even know if they're in business anymore, that the goal was to get the students downtown, to get these single-family homes, and it succeeded, it succeeded to a point. Uh, but now, I see that the bars are moving towards development. The bars are moving towards Johnson City now. And success breeds ruinous competition. State Street, businesses are closing. Uh, you know, the Goldsmith, she's closing up. Store worthy of any major city in this country. A very talented designer, a great merchandiser. That store, when you go into it, it could be in Montreal, it could be in New York, it could be in Washington, it could be in Miami. That's how good that store was. And maybe it was too good for this area. So, I don't know what this thing is gonna do, but I'll tell you this, I've been around a long time. I've been in planning meetings, zoning meetings, neighborhood meetings, all kinds of, every kind of meeting. I've heard all kinds of BS from everybody. And I don't think this means a damn thing, except somebody is going to use it to make money. What we need in this city right now, January 1st, is rent control, that's what we need. How about that from the Trump guy?
Thank you for speaking. Anyone else want to speak on it? Introduce your ordinance, 19-113, please go forward.
Well, okay, I need the Shawna Cole, and I am the token Libertarian of Binghamton. And I would like to comment on the legislation, but however, I don't know what it is. General rent control is insane. Markets decide what the price should be. That is a market phenomenon known as price discovery. However, a lot of the times, we don't even get that because of governments meddling in the economy, whether it be through central planning or some kind of twisted Keynesian model in which very few benefit. And then we see a bubble, like we see the college bubble happening here now. And then we see the derivative debt bubbles from the college debt. Because let's just face it, that's all debt, right? That's what it is, it's student loan money, it's debt, right? Over $1 trillion in student debt, but hey, Binghamton's thriving because of it. Meanwhile, you guys are like, "Yeah!", you know? Property taxes go up, property values go up, but yet same stupid house, right? I mean, there's been no value added to it, it's just that our money is now worth less because on paper, there's all this money, right? Which means you need more of it to buy stuff, so therefore it just becomes less valuable. I mean, right? Austrian economist? Um, but generally, when government talks about streamlining, that usually is to the effect of, um, cutting constitutional safeguards that are put into place to keep from, um, power being autocrat. But we're seeing this more and more and it really doesn't matter what branch of government it is, whether it's the, uh, the, uh, president, um, making legislation through executive order or the legislation stepping outside of its authority to do things like tell us how we have to spend more money or better, yes, spend the money for us on things like LUMA, which is lights on buildings, but, um, yeah. Or making us byproducts like compulsory schooling. You know, the Binghamton City School District spends over $18,000 a year per student and those kids are as dumb as rocks. Seriously, I don't school my kids and I do it for less than $1,000 a year. And then I'd like to talk about, um, I missed the last council meeting, but the council meeting before that, every single person here minus Dr. Councilman voted yes to put a propaganda program in the schools. Because we need to teach kids, we need to indoctrinate them into this idea that cops are there to protect them. Really? Because the last time I read, the intent of the founders of this nation intended for you to be able to protect yourself and they were supposed to just secure liberty, personal liberty, which is the liberty to change one's situation and the freedom of locomotion and natural liberty. Things like raising your children, keeping the fruits of your labor. But that doesn't happen anymore because now you guys have given yourselves some convoluted vehicle in the form of a, uh, state corporation, the corporation of the city of Binghamton, in which you insist that, hey, you know what? We're gonna tax you for what we have and we're gonna spend that on things that you don't want, whether it be a crappy school system, lights on buildings, or some business that we need to play favorites with because, hey, you know, there is no capitalism anymore. I'm not allowed to consider my own utility for these things. And for those of you who've never picked up an economics book, utility is how I value how I use something. I have no use for LUMA. I think that is some really just kitschy, uh... So, um, yeah. As far as the legislation goes, I see a lot of this sloppy work. And a great example would be a few years I came down here to verify some executive offices and that would be the police officer. So according to the PBO, public officers are supposed to be bonded and they're supposed to have a surety. Well, the record, what was on record was not a complete record because it was absent of a juror. There was no record of duration on these oaths for the city of Binghamton officers. I also had requested, um, the surety and the bond on the undertaking for the office of a police officer for the city of Binghamton and I was not confronted with that. In fact, I had, uh, called corporate counsel at the time, I believe, this was back in 2014, and I just got the runaround. Kind of the same way I do at the DNP when I call the DNP.
Your time is up, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on it? Introduce your ordinance, 19-113, please go forward.
I just wanted to note before the speakers on the zoning legislation. It is available on the city of Binghamton's website. If you go to the city of Binghamton calendar, you go to from October 23rd, you click on City Council Business Meeting, that was when the public hearing was opened. So if you click on that, uh, there's a whole list of, uh, several, um, things that were discussed at that meeting. Third link down says zoning attachments, so if you care to look at the, uh, the updated zoning legislation, it's available on the city's website.
Thank you, Council. Anyone else wish to speak on this ordinance? Let's go forward. See none will move on. Councilman Crans, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I was just wondering about the C6 legislation. Because like, that's what I mean, tax, the, 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 the C6 legislation.
It was referred, it was referred to the Planning Commission at our last meeting.
I don't think we, we're not gonna go out until we finish that, right?
The C6 legislation is nominated and...
And denied for legislation that's still open for public hearing tonight. Uh, that's not on our agenda to vote on. Um, the C6 ledge has been refused by the Planning Commission and when this piece of legislation receives a specific or sufficient number of sponsors, at that point, it would be added to our agenda. Since sponsorship was withdrawn this week, it's not on our agenda.
Justice, would you like to set the public hearing, please?
I'd continue, because council wished to keep the public hearing open on the piece of legislation that was just discussed.
Take a second.
Yep, there's no vote required to keep it open, just a vote required to keep it closed. Just wanted to make sure that the city goes.
Next on the set public hearings, the Binghamton City Council, the mayor of the city of Binghamton will hold a public hearing regarding the proposed updates to the city's citizen participation plan requested by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, PUC, on November 20th, 2019, at the regularly scheduled business meeting. The Binghamton City Council and the mayor of the city of Binghamton will hold a public hearing regarding the proposed consolidated annual performance and evaluation report paper requested by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, PUC, on November 20th, 2019, at the regularly scheduled business meeting.
Now on the public camera, you have five minutes to speak, if you're respectful.
Good evening, tired of dealing. Congratulations on your reelection. Absolutely. Uh, I came down to follow up on a couple of the requests for legislations I submitted back in August. This is the, um, regarding the Financial Ethics Disclosure Act for Binghamton officials, which basically adopts the same process across the government plaza that the county uses and applies that to the mayor, uh, and his department heads to ensure we have the highest standards of ethical leaders and to improve transparency and accountability in City Hall. The second one was just annual reporting of assessment reductions. Very simple, annual report, one pager, two pager, that the assessor has to post publicly online that shows all of the privately-owned properties in which he personally or the Board of Assessment Review had reduced the property assessment. As you know, I, I suggested these reforms following the disclosure that there was both unethical and illegal actions that were uncovered, both by citizens as well as internal investigation by the Law Department, by the assessor that directly benefited Mayor Rich David by thousands of dollars a year. When I, I sent this to you and then sent three emails over the following three weeks, didn't hear back from you. So I came down here and asked you in September, um, where the status was and you said that they were under review. Uh, so I thought I'd come back down after the election to show you that my interest was never partisan. My interest is always improving government, ethical government. So I look forward to work, to be honest. Do you have any update on where they stand?
They're still under review by the clerk's office, so I don't have an update.
The clerk's office is conducting the review? Because, and the clerk's office sent the legislation to you. I thought you had sent it to the Law Department for review. What is the clerk's office doing with a review? Checking to make sure the number falls in line with the last legislation?
I can, I can clarify. Um, the clerk's office has looked at other similar legislations in other municipalities and intends to present something to cancel all those lines, just to see how other munis have addressed the issue in the past and they're not required to have that by state law. State law requires the county to have it, doesn't require the city to have it, or does that capacity as well? Doesn't mean it's not a good idea, just trying to make sure that it's consistent with what other municipalities have.
Okay. As some who proposed that, and I know a couple council members here also expressed interest in seeing that move forward, will I be notified when that decision is made or if they ever are presented?
When the proposed ledge is presented to council, it'll be an agenda item at a work session. I don't have any objection, and I don't think the clerk's office has any objection to letting you know since you suggested it in the first place when it comes to a work session.
That would be great, thank you. I certainly hope that, you know, we don't have to rely on mandated, um, ethical standards. Uh, I know you do, uh, and, but I'm just saying in regards to the parties. But I will say, I do question, um, I do question the Republicans' commitment to transparency and ethics. And I'll say that what, what we saw in this last election, and I heard this from many people, I've been here for 15, 15 years, have never seen a more vile, disgusting, race-baiting, grotesque attack and smear campaign launched on every single Democratic campaign, launched on people who weren't even in the race, launched on volunteers, volunteers of candidates. And also, of course, what happened, uh, with Mr. Livingston. So, thank you for your service. I think you have done more in 10 months than what some of your outgoing colleagues have done over two terms.
You have one minute left.
Your crime was that you cared, that you wanted to fulfill your promise to the residents to make government more transparent, to increase access to City Hall and the decision-making process for all citizens. And the fact that this local GOP and Bruin Kingpin, Bjoy Data, and Mayor Rich David saw that it's such a threat, speak so much more about this, about their character than yours. So thanks for your service, man. I hope to get a note when you guys wanna consider ethics.
John, so I've been up in New York, let's continue on that theme of what happened to Angela Riley. Uh, she's a professional woman, associated with the university. She's not some lunatic that's running around looking at pictures of Castro and Che Guevara. So, I, I mean, when you treat somebody like that, that way, now, it's, it, it, it might be a little justified with the other people because they're in-your-face type people and, uh, you know, they've got a track record up in all that. So if you wanna take on certain members of an organization as being extreme, I mean, not everybody's as good-humored as me. You know what I mean? You know, I can yell and scream and everything else and we can laugh at that. But, uh, that was a, a very low point in this city's history and I hope it will be remembered. Now, the interesting thing to me is the, uh, the Geovine Sprinch, you're functioning well without him. Imagine that, imagine that. This PhD, you know? I mean, everything's moving right along just like it always did. So, I, I, I guess you mean less council people. You didn't, you didn't appoint anybody. Now let me tell you something. If three people walk out of here, you're out of business because there's no war. You know, so you think you're cute by doing this, setting this stuff up, but you're really a people that don't know anything about government at all. All you know about is grabbing a paycheck. Now I made an issue, I always made an issue when people didn't show up at these meetings. And I remember you were after Leah Webb and then this goes, is there a pattern? You know, where, where does Leah Webb live? You know, where does she live? And it was a big thing. And then Bill Burr. Now Bill Burr was off the message to a union guy, "Can you do anything for me?" I mean, to me, you know, that doesn't mean anything. Can you do anything for me? You know, I mean, if, if you were to, every, if, you wouldn't have a county legislature, you wouldn't have a state senate, you wouldn't have an assembly, you wouldn't have a congress if that was the, if you can do anything for me, if that was the standard. Now, did Mr., uh, has the attorney been hired for the investigation of Dan Livingston? And how much were they charged? Has, have, have they been hired? Has Mr. Livingston received a bill of particulars or some sort of, uh, list of charges against him? Is this gonna be forgotten about on January? Are you just gonna smear somebody two weeks before an election? First, I called somebody in the media. No, he actually, he sent me the press release that went out, somebody that had been in those news desks for a long, long time. And I said, "Well, did you ever get a press release like this before with quotations from council people?" And he said, "No, we never got one." There's never been a press release that has come here with quotations of council people. So, uh, what, what's it all about? It was just a cheap bullet of a shot, how was it? Let's admit, the election is over with, mission accomplished. Let, let, let's admit what it really was. I just asked, uh, Mr. Papastra how he felt Sofia Resamendi is on the board of the children's home. She's directly responsible for supervising that thing, oversight. Well, you got child pornography, you got people complaining. It fell on deaf ears over there. So you wanna investigate that? Did you wanna investigate Joseph Zikuski on the Officer Sager 14 where it says that people are willing to testify that Joe Zikuski was having sex with other officers' wives and sending them out on, on things while he was doing it so it'd make it convenient? You didn't wanna investigate that?
You have one minute remaining.
Okay, so, I wanna know, as a citizen, I wanna know when that lawyer's gonna be hired, uh, how much he's gonna charge, when the bill of particulars, because who's, who's his accuser? I mean, Jared Cran, I've got a million questions about it. Well, who the hell is Jared Cran? Who elected Gerald, uh, Jared Cran? I mean, you know, I wanna see specific charges, I, you know, I love Chris. After, after that whole tar and feather job, well, we don't wanna make it look bad, you know? We don't, we don't wanna make it look like we're out to get you, yeah? This is a joke, this is a joke. This is not civilized governance at all. It's complete self-parody. But good news, good news, if that election for district attorney handles, the Libertarian Party is the hottest ticket in town.
No, it's not. He's a fake Libertarian.
He's not a fake Libertarian, he got the nomination to the party and he's a little more fake Libertarian lady than you're a real Democrat.
Excuse me, your time is up, sir.
John McEnroe, baby, right back after.
Shawna Cole, Libertarian, first ward. Libertarians believe in self-governance. Self-governance does not support a democracy because in a democracy, like a corporation, there is a minority and there is a majority, okay? Has nothing to do with color, race, sex, uh, gender, or how you identify. It has to do with your rights as an individual. That's what self-governance is. We were supposed to have a republican form of government, a republican form of government. The distinguishing feature in a republican form of government is the lodgment of sovereignty. The lodgment of sovereignty is not with a majority or a minority, okay? And an example of a majority rule would be the Jim Crow laws that happened in the 60s down south, right? They decided that the minority didn't have the right to associate with who they wanted to, so they made segregation laws, which were clearly unconstitutional. So now we're looking at, legally speaking, legislative edict, right? Because they have no authority to tell us these kinds of things, but yet they do and they say it's law, it's law, it's law. Just like everything else they do. Your child has to wear a helmet, your child has to go to our schools and you have to pay for it. We get to plan what you do, we get to zone what you do, we get to tell you what you can and can't do with your private property based on code and then you do anything to try to improve that property and we get to come in and assess you and tax you for your shelter. The problem here is I don't think anybody here knows what form of government we're supposed to have or the proper governance. Heck, half of you probably don't even know what a citizen is because by definition, citizens are corporations. Government is supposed to facilitate trade, but we don't see government doing this. We see government planning our lives and then enforcing it upon us with guns, with, uh, through, through the legal lease system here, the DA's office, through the bar association, which is what, a 506 whatever? And they tell us all, "It's the law, it's the law, it's the law", but yet no one stops to question what the law is. Does anybody here, can anybody here give you a definition of what the law is? It's the decree of the sovereign. So who's the sovereign and what is sovereignty? Well, sovereignty is the supreme authority. And since we're supposed to live in a republic, the lodgment of sovereignty is with who? The people as individuals. The people as individuals. Constitution starts out for the federal government, be the people, first person plural, right? Meaning, I as one of an indefinite number of many other individuals. And then, powers are enumerated. Enumerated means listed. So, where in the enumerations do you get to tell me what I can and can't have for personal property? When do you get the fruits of my labor through direct taxation, which can be used discriminatorily and it has been? Same thing with property taxes so many of you liberals have brought up with Rich David and the property tax assessments. You don't think that these things are being used discriminatorily? But yet, you're the ones who clamor for more taxes. And then over here, we have the Republicans who are all like, yes, we're going to lower taxes, but they don't.
Yeah, one minute remaining.
They're business-friendly. But all they do is pick winners and losers because they get to go in and like, ooh, the convergence of corporate and state power. Well, that's just fascism and we see that now, but nobody wants to call it out. I don't think anybody here knows what proper governance is. You're supposed to do one thing, keep the roads open. Keep them from being adversely possessed by those using them as places of business for trade. Because you're supposed to secure personal liberty, which is the freedom of locomotion. But you don't do that. But you do everything else to interfere with that, whether it be our right to contract. Because you've interjected yourself in many, many occasions as a third party into what is essentially a two-party contract. Between me and my kids to teach them. I got to send them to, oh, no, no. And then you screwed that up. So, I'm like, okay, I'm going to do this on my own.
Excuse me, your time is up. Thank you for speaking.
How are you doing? It's Howard Reeve. I am the facilities engineer at the wastewater plant.
Excuse me, what's your address, sir?
It's Kaplan.
Want to take a moment? Second. Rules are suspended? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I'm just going to make it brief. I feel like it's, it's an opportunity while I'm still a public servant here to speak while Dan is recording this and just remind the public that, you know, we're still at the wastewater plant, we're still working hard. Things are approaching finalization. We're working very, very hard against adverse conditions and we're just waiting for an answer. And I just wanted to remind the public that we're still there, we're still working, and we're still waiting for answers. I'm not going to ask you here if you have an answer. I'm sure if you don't, and again, I just wanted to keep the point valid in the public's mind while the public still has a view of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else who wants to speak? Just go forward. See, now we'll close this second of the meeting. I took the preferred agenda. Not the preferred agenda, I apologize. Introduce your audience, 19-115, Considered Finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for Dan's consideration of ordinance 19-115.
Second.
This is an order to amend the 2019 Department of Public Works budget for non-fundee and solid sand.
Question, your comments on this? Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Six As, one Absence, Scrappy.
Introduce your audience, 19-116, Considered Finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for Ms. consideration for ordinance 19-116. Second. This is an order to amend the 2019 Department budget for public debt.
Question, your comments on this? Call the question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Six As, one Absence, Scrappy.
Introduce your audience, 19-117, Considered Finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask for Ms. consideration for ordinance 19-117.
Second.
This is an order to amend the 2019 Department of Public Works budget for construction and materials.
Question, your comments? Call the question, your question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Six As, one Absence, Scrappy.
Introduce your audience, 19-118, Considered Employees, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask for Ms. consideration for ordinance 19-118.
Second.
This is an order to amend Chapter 124-44.A. Payment Schedule for Health Insurance Premium for Officers and Employees Not Covered by Collective Bargaining Agreements in 2020.
Question, your comments on this? Call the question, question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Six As, one Absence, Scrappy.
Introduce your audience, 19-119, Considered Finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask for Ms. consideration for ordinance 19-119.
Second.
This is an order to amend the 2019 Fire Department to accept revenue for training of new firefighters from the village of Johnson City, the village of Benjicott, and the city of Norwich.
Question, your comments on this?
Call the question.
Question, McCullough?
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman McCross?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Papastri?
Aye.
Councilman Mazza?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Six As, one Absence, Scrappy.
Introduce your audience, 19-120, Considered Finance, Councilman Papastri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for Ms. consideration for ordinance 19-120.
Second.
This is an order to amend the 2019 budget to transfer funds from legal services.
Question, your comments?
Mr. President?
Yes. Councilman?
Thank you. So, I, so it's come to my attention that this attorney, that this attorney's office that was spoken of at the work session has already been engaged for their services in some fashion. I'm not really clear on whether there's a contract or just some sort of verbal engagement, but I'm a little concerned about this because, well, first of all, we haven't even voted yet. And also because, just as a matter of process, this appears to be, if we have in fact engaged for these legal services without going through city council, appears to be a violation of the city's procurement policy. If you look at the city's procurement policy, section C1, it states, "City council must approve any contracts for professional services exceeding $10,000. Provided, however, that during any calendar year where the cumulative amount of professional service contracts awarded by the Board of Contracted Supplies equals $60,000 or more, the threshold drops to $1,000 for city council approval of additional contract unless otherwise permitted." And I'm not sure if, I haven't been able to find otherwise permitted that would negate this section of the city's procurement policy. And I did reach out to the clerk's office unsuccessfully to obtain a tabulation of the amount of professional services contracts that have been awarded here to date. So, I just went into the minutes from the Board of Contracted Supply. And I, you know, I was, I had to read through to make sure that the definition of professional services contract that I was working with looking at the Board of Contracted Supply minutes was correct. So, my best guess, because there were actually four meeting minutes that were missing from the city's website, which I've also yet to be able to obtain from the clerk's office. Although I did just ask this morning, so I'm not, you know, throwing it on them or whatever. But the three most reasons are missing, so I'm not even sure whether, whether this legal services contract or whatever is going on even went through the Board of Contracted Supply. But the total that I have here to date is $118,325.50. So, that well exceeds the $60,000 maximum that would result in any sort of contract for legal services coming for the Livingston City Council. And, I mean, I guess it's conceivable that the contract is for less than $1,000, but since Corporation Council presented us with an estimate of $2,500 to $7,500, I think it's reasonable to assume that any contract, if there is such a contract for legal services, would exceed that $1,000 minimum. So, what I'm, what I'm asking for is actually for this body to assert its authority, to govern this city process correctly. And, you know, honestly, that is really what is being put on me at this point. Is that, is that somehow the fact that something happened that wasn't supposed to happen is an indication of some larger conspiracy or issue that warrants spending taxpayer dollars to conduct an investigation on the eve of an election. I would say that the same holds true for the city. The city is responsible to follow the rules that govern the city and to come into compliance with the procurement policy. And also, of course, to just get some basic answers about what exactly is happening right now, what legal services have been contracted or engaged with at this point and under what authority, frankly. Also, I just want to kind of reiterate something that came up during the work session on this issue, which is that, you know, Councilman Taylor and I had some, I would say, reasonable questions about the scope of this review that not only weren't answered, but were met with what I would call hostility and derision from Corporation Council at that meeting. And just to reiterate, the questions are, you know, what is the scope of this investigation? You know, where does it start, where does it end? Are there, are there goals in mind? Who is being investigated? For what reason has this outside review begun? Why is it necessary? And what's our timeline? You know, are we, are we just going endlessly? Are we just following the, as Corporation Council said at the meeting, are we just asking questions and seeing where that leaves us? Or is there some definition of what we're doing? And, you know, ultimately, if the goal of this is just to save hands of that guy, then that's what it is. But I think that this body has a responsibility to, if we're going to spend taxpayer dollars, and frankly, it's a lot of money. We're going to spend that much money of taxpayer dollars on an outside review? We owe it to the taxpayers to at least have some sort of a goal of having some refinances to figure out what we can do better moving forward. Because if we're just spending this money to drag me through the mud, I don't think that that really serves the public interest. But if we're spending this money to ultimately figure out what happened, why it happened, and how we can keep us from happening again, because frankly, it seems like there's already something that happened earlier with Councilwoman McCross that, you know, I'm not saying it was the same thing, but asking these questions at this point could prevent having yet another instance of something similar happening in the future. So, I'm voting no on this. Thank you.
Council President, do you mind if I?
Sure.
In regards to contract and supply, the clerk's office is not the secretary for contract and supply. In regards to your email, we forward that immediately to Mike Durbin, who is the secretary for contract and supply. In regards to the minutes, that's what we asked for, right?
Councilman Lou Xemblé, Matt from Corporation Council answered you, or gave his side. Oh, it was transpired.
So, just to clarify, Matt and I will be covering the business meetings and work sessions going forward. Ken is not, and so one of the things we're trying to do over the next one and a half is prepare ourselves as lowly-assisted Corporation Councils to be able to represent ourselves on the record, hence this fended back and forth. Matt actually did the research prior to retention. I have to admit, I'm not familiar with the current work team, the various links in our office, but Matt is more familiar with the issue. So, I'm going to allow you to, to that question.
So, Dan, I think the part of the issue is in that section of the human policy that you're talking about. It's the very last line there.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, the very last line there in C1, unless otherwise permitted. So, we're, I believe, we're only at, as far as Court Council is concerned, we're only at 16.
As far as the city?
As far as the city. 16,000 is the number that we have. So, we're well below the 16,000 threshold.
Do you see, do you understand what I'm saying there?
So, we hide, the Office of Corporation Council hires outside counsel frequently. And there's not an additional approval process required for those.
It's not like a PS, it's not, I'm sorry, PSK, sorry to say. It's not like a traditional professional services contract because Corporation Council already has an outside counsel line to help us with various matters we may have to hold or otherwise. And so, what Matt's referring to is the provision under procurement that has to do with amounts not otherwise authorized. So, City Council has thought, and I think this is great to put together, so that City Council has some sense of how much money it does offer us a year, has authorized a lot of money, and the amount of money it has not authorized is $16,000, not $118,000, if that makes sense. Because it's not done when we have, yeah, PSK is its whole, it's done as to the number that has or has not been authorized. So, City Council authorized a lot of money, the only amount of money that they haven't authorized is 16K, so it doesn't put us above that procurement policy number of $16,000. With that said, I think the questions that you were asking are valid. And it appears that they were unnecessarily insufficiently at the work session, but is the city in violation of its procurement policy? No. Does the Office of Corporation Council have authority to hire outside counsel without City Council's approval? Of course we do. We do it all the time because we're a law office and sometimes we need to consult people.
I think that's part of the point that Sharon's making, that it's essentially already been approved by City Council.
What? Sorry, what has been approved by City Council now? So, at the, at the meeting, we approved outside review with no, with no specifics to pin to that. So, is there?
Right. That's, that's all that's required. It's essentially just a, a more formal process is not required.
So, is there a contract?
I don't believe that there has been any.
I know. We don't know either.
We don't, we don't.
How?
Corporation Council, we don't, we don't.
Why, why would the Corporation Council? Why, why would Corporation Council know the answer to whether there is a contract for legal services?
The Corporation Council, Ken Frank, obviously knows whether or not we've signed some kind of retention agreement with, with a third-party review, or I imagine that they're a council, they're, they're interning, they're interning. We don't have personal knowledge of that, so we can't represent that on the record. What I can say is that in our budget, the outside counsel line doesn't cover the maximum amount that was pitched to City Council on Monday. City Council, in its rightful place, thank you to Sean Cole, controls purse trips, right? That's one of the checks and balances of our system. So you can choose to authorize an amount above what is in the budget. I don't know what our total budget is, but I think that the total amount of seventy-five hundred exceeds what's in the current outside counsel line for the Office of Corporation.
I believe Ken said there was five thousand left at the work session.
That sounds about right. And I believe the total line for the year is twenty, twenty thousand.
Yeah.
So that's, and that's, so that's essentially, I think, what we're talking about, when we say that that was already approved. That's money that's in Corporation Council's budget in that line, not our outside counsel.
That would be decided tonight, most certainly. You guys have the authority to decide it tonight. Corporation Council members matter, likes to zero out these outside counsel line prior to the end of the year. Therefore, if it's an amount that goes above, I think, what's in our current line, it's seeking, it's seeking an amendment to the budget so that it doesn't potentially go down to zero. You've got to prepare something else, have to hire outside counsel, a lot of different others, and we have several out there working for us right now.
Ken, Matt, can you explain how the Section C1 to, to describe not the aggregate of, of contracts awarded here to date, but the aggregate of contracts awarded here to date that, that fell under that ten thousand, or fell of that, pardon?
I think you're saying that not, why it's not?
Yeah, how did you arrive? I, I'm reading it, and I don't see, I don't see it in, in the black and white, how you arrived at that, so I'm interested to know how you arrived at that conclusion.
Well, I think our, our reading of it is, you know, what I said at the outset, that, that unless, unless otherwise permitted line, so we have incorporated, the Office of Corporation Council has money in the budget, in a budget line for outside counsel, and that, that gets approved during the budget by City Council. So that, that's, that's essentially where that, where that comes from.
This legislation is coming forward to?
To say it, to say it a different way. Professional, the line of the procurement policy applies to professional services contracts. Okay? Corporation Council amended the outside, or City Council amended the outside counsel budget line, doesn't fall under the procurement policy at all. Even if it did fall under the procurement policy, you guys are well under that sixty thousand dollar mark.
I have, I have to say, I'm still, I'm still not clear as to, it just seems so plain to me that, that this is, that this is referring to the, the aggregate of, of contracts.
And if we haven't explained it well enough, and you're not clear?
Well, you missed.
That's a, that's a sufficient, if anybody is not clear, and you guys have questions about whether or not the Office of Corporation Council and the City Council is complying with the law, by all means, do either hold it or vote no. Right? Coming here, obviously, what we want, what the work session is for, is we're answering some of those questions. When this piece of legislation got signed out, it was now before, before you. I hate that to be the moment where what is legal and what is not legal is being debated, because what's before you is not something that the Office of Corporation Council clearly views to be in violation of our code or policy or proper procedure, et cetera.
Right.
So if there are about, if there are questions, and you think your questions are valid, and they have not been answered sufficiently, by all means, vote no or take no.
Other questions or comments on 19-120?
Mr. President? Yes. I would, I would just add that, you know, not only, I reiterate that, you know, the, the questions, not only weren't answered sufficiently, it didn't really feel like there was, it's not even answered questions at the work session. And, I, I mean, I, I feel like it's really unfortunate that, not just, not just myself, but members of the public who are curious about this contract, and that Corporation Council has sided with different people in their office, and you're coming to this meeting unable to answer a question that seems pretty critical to, critical to the matter of discussion. I just want to go on the record saying that's really unfortunate.
Thank you, Council. Other questions or comments on 19-120? Councilwoman Cross?
Yeah, thanks. All the City Council members asked to have it go outside of our own legal, because it has been involved in the ultimate, which I think it is, but we have it go outside. And you said, you agreed, Councilwoman Taylor agreed, every single council person agreed that we wanted it to go outside. And now you're trying to pick numbers, I don't know. Do you want Corporate Council to do it? Because I don't think that would be very reasonable. I'd rather have it go outside to a non-legal source to make sure that the ethics is done, not within house, but outside of house. And that's what we had all discussed, and that's why we decided to do this. You're confusing me with all your questions. It's really easy to read the legislative pieces and what it says. And that's it.
Thank you, Council. Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just clarify. Primarily because I think as, as the Office of Corporation Council, we try and be as prepared as possible to meet. The one question that you asked that I don't know the answer to, and neither does Matt, is, is there a retainer agreement that has been executed by Ken with some other attorney? I don't know the answer to that. When this body voted, I should say, when this body had this discussion two work sessions ago, with regards to whether or not the majority wanted the Office of Corporation Council to essentially enlist a third party to begin some review of the internship, not you in particular, that didn't need to be voted on. Similar to a lot of the issues or requests for legislation or queries that City Council poses on a regular basis during the work session, all that we need is for a majority straw poll to say, yeah, we want you to look into that. You guys formalize that, but you can't just vote. So you're right, I don't have the answer to whether or not there's a retainer agreement. However, I do have the answer that the action of contacting a third party to engage in the inquiry was authorized by this body, and was squarely within the authority of Corporation Council, as they are authorized if you want to, the law. Your secondary question, tertiary question, which is, isn't this very act contacting this third-party investigator or putting this amendment before counsel illegal? The answer to that, I can tell you with certainty, is no. And I think Matt and I went into several reasons why that's true. But I think we are prepared to answer those questions, but you're right, I don't know whether or not a retainer agreement has been executed. I think it's a valid question, and it's an answer that I will ensure our clerk's office circulates to this council tomorrow.
Other questions or comments on 19-120? Councilwoman Cross?
Okay, on the stand brought up, they, they, I just wanted to clarify to everybody here tonight the reason why. I brought it up as I tried to have an MOU with NPA students at Binghamton University. They turned me down because they said I was not a full-time employee, and I don't have an office here at City Hall. Anyone who is required to do the MOU has to provide those. Since I couldn't provide them, I couldn't get it. I just want to make sure that one, maybe two universities not play the favorites, because I've seen it happen before, and I want to make sure that they are publicable. It doesn't matter what political letter we have next to our name, everyone should be able to get in and work with Binghamton University without being harassed, and I know that they have harassed other people who are not a Democrat as well. And I want to make sure that it doesn't happen. And for me, that's what I think to get out of it.
Other questions or comments? Councilwoman Livingston?
First, I would, I would just remind the, the Councilwoman that at the time that you reached out to the university, I'm guessing, because I think it happened a while ago, yeah, it did in front of your name, so if there was some sort of.
No, because everything.
There was some sort of partisan aspect to the way that the Masters Public Administration Program puts interns out there, then I don't think it would have registered that as a wrong side of things for them, if they, in fact, worked with me because of my status as a Democrat. But I also, I just want to point something out, which is just, this whole, like, there is an email that, that went out between, that, that came from Thomas Sinclair from the Masters of Public Administration Program on September twenty-third to Ken Frank, in which he said, "Our department understood that the placement was not with the City Council as a court." You know, and it was at that moment that honestly, this whole thing should have been. Because if there was any suspicion that somehow the university was misled, Mr. Sinclair clarified that for Corporation Council. But instead, the matter just got pressed even further. And also, just, just for the, the Councilwoman, you said you were not clear on what I was even really getting at here. What I'm getting at is that, you know, if we're going to spend taxpayer dollars to conduct an outside review, and if we're going to, yeah, we need to figure out what it is that we're reviewing. I mean, to just vote to say, we want an outside review, there's no details there. It's like, take for instance, the contract for services with the Bevamote's, or rather, not Bevamote, but the other guy, Bruce Tode's law. When, when he came and gave us our oral presentation and told us that there wasn't going to be a writ report, I looked back at the contract, and the contract that this body constituted back in October of last year approved, had no specific explanation of the, the services to be provided, like what work was being provided, for instance, yeah, like this, with what I was talking about. You know, what are they going to do? What's the reason for it? Why is it necessary? What's the timeline? And what's the work that's going to be provided? None of that stuff was in that contract. And when you move a contract like that, then it can go any which way. The, the, the result can be almost anything at all. And the reason why I bring this up is because we're talking about, or my colleagues here are talking about this being a process that is not political, that is not partisan, and I'm just saying, let's, let's get specific. There's, there's nothing wrong with getting specific with how we're contracting, and I'm not talking about verbal agreements with, you know, how we're describing it to the attorneys, you know, maybe behind closed doors or whatever, or face-to-face meeting. I'm talking about getting specific in the contract so that we get what we need out of this process, and so that the public gets something out of this process as well, because we're spending our money to do it.
Other questions or comments on 19-120?
Call the question.
Question to call?
Councilwoman Livingston?
Nay.
Councilwoman Cross?
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Nay.
Councilwoman Papastra?
Aye.
Councilwoman Matzo?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Four As, two Ns, one Absent, script.
Air Dr. Dornish, 19-1, 19-121, Considered Finances, Councilwoman Papastra.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for a net consideration of ordinance 19-121. This is an order to amend the 2019 community development administration budget to fund temporary services for a consultant to assist with the CBPG program.
Questions or comments?
All the questions. Question to call?
Councilwoman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cross?
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Papastra?
Aye.
Councilwoman Matzo?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Six As, one Absent, script.
Air Dr. Resolution 19-90, Considered Finances, Councilwoman Papastra.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for a net consideration of Resolution 19-90. Second. This is a resolution authorizing the city to accept a fifty thousand dollar grant for the Broome County District Attorney's Office traffic diversion program.
Comments or questions, Mr. President?
All the questions. Question to call?
Councilwoman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cross?
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Papastra?
Aye.
Councilwoman Matzo?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Six As, one Absent, script.
Air Dr. Resolution 19-91, Considered Finances, Councilwoman Papastra.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for a net consideration of Resolution 19-91. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with John W. Danford Company for change order number two for pipe work in the digester gas conditioning room and digester control building, and for miscellaneous work at various sites throughout the Vicente Johnson City Jonesuit facility.
Questions or comments?
All the questions.
Question to call?
Councilwoman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cross?
Aye.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Papastra?
Aye.
Councilwoman Matzo?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Six As, one Absent, script.
On to communications from Council members, we'll start with Councilwoman Cross.
Thank you. Just want to send a formal invite to anyone who's interested in joining the Libertarian Advocates of Broome County. Right now, we're working on men's rights in the court system. A lot of times, men are looked down upon and unfair verdicts are often given to men, especially men of color. So we will be working on that, also working with, helping fathers have a role in their family. A lot of the times, the court system kicks them right out of the family. We want to make sure this stops. We're also working on the halfway house, so if you want to come work with that, you're welcome to. There's a lot of different things we're working on. If you have ideas and you want to come work with us and you want to help us, you're welcome to bring your ideas, bring your passion, and let's make a difference.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I knew, Councilwoman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations on your reelection.
Thank you.
I'd like to point everyone to the Boho Comedy Club grand opening happening this Friday at the Doubletree Hotel. It's a huge deal. We've got a comedy club coming to Binghamton, and that's a really, really, really exciting thing. There is a, 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 a personal story to the origin of this club, and it's really just amazing to see it opening up this Friday, something that the entire community should support, and it's just one of the many incredible things consistently happening in the fourth district, so excited to share with everyone. I'd like to thank Councilman Papastra and Matzo for starting a great series of planning committee meetings this past Monday to talk more in detail about the zoning ordinance and code. I hope that we continue the conversation over the next few weeks and get a really consensus that, you know, creates legitimate rules around student housing, that promotes affordable housing in community, in our community, that creates, creates a more walkable community, and, you know, I, I thought we had a good first meeting. Lastly, I'd just like to go off of my very first comment from this evening to congratulate all the winners and all the candidates that ran in the most recent elections, specifically the City Council elections. I do want to point out that even with early voting and a very hotly contested district attorney's race, turnout here in the city of Binghamton was wildly low. It was so low this year. And I just want to take this time, I've only got a couple of months left on City Council. The people that know me, including all of you, the people that know me in this community, know that I'm a straight shooter, that I don't, you know, like to play in party politics, that what I say comes. that what I say comes from what I think is best about this community and what I think really, really matters. And I was beyond horrified and disappointed this year at the level of atrocity that the Republican GOP party put out in their campaign mailers and in their negative campaigning. It was a, an effort designed to make people scared to vote. It was an effort designed to make people hate politics. It was an effort designed to make people believe that they, that there shouldn't be any hope in City Hall for them.
There's not.
But there should be. Government should be a place where people come together to create positive change. That's what every one of us should believe by being here at the table. That's why folks like Jessica and Sharon and Matthew spend way more than 40 hours a week trying to make this community a better place and become public servants. And I think that every single person that supports and doesn't call out that kind of negative campaigning, doxing, and releasing private photos and information about volunteer canvassers, calling the most honest, rational people like Angela Riley criminal extremists just so you can scare people from not going out to vote, anyone who doesn't call that out, anyone that doesn't stand up and say, they, they do not think that's okay, anybody that doesn't say, "Bejoy Dada, Mayor David, how dare you represent our party in that way?" It is demoralizing as a young person that is supposed to be inspired by public service. You have a, an obligation to stand up for positive government, not negative mudslinging, mudslinging politics. And I don't say that it doesn't happen on both sides of the aisle. Gosh, sure does at the national level. But we have an opportunity in local politics to stand against that. And I think if you don't stand up and say something, you're really failing the public, you're failing young people that look to you, and you're failing yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And the Council Papastra.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Call.
I know that was a very heartfelt speech you gave, Andrea, but it does happen on both sides. It happens every year, whether it be national, state, or local. Mudslinging has been part of our canvas, of political canvas for many, many years. And, uh, this year, the, if I recall the numbers, they were no different than they were the last, uh, off-year reelections. We had 1,700 people vote in my district, par for the course. 2,100 people in Dan's district, par for the course. 700 in seven-year district, par for the course.
That's... Hmm? It's far lower this year.
Thank you then from when you ran, but that is the number that's typical for north-side, uh, voting. John, I'm not sure about yours, but I think you're...
Mine was right in the, yeah, I might, you could go 900 to 120.
So, yes, there is mudslinging, but, um, you can't, I mean, to go out and, and make this passionate speech about Republicans when the, the, both parties do it on a regular basis, and not just at the election time, but there's mudslinging all through the year from members of your party against Republicans. So, um, I think, I just take a little offense to that, that we're, uh, some bad, bad guys, and we're supposed to call everybody out. Let's do it, let's call everybody out then. Let's call everybody that, on the Democrat side, that's mudslinging on a daily basis.
Thank you, Councilman. And the Councilman Matso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, congratulations on the reelection. I want to congratulate my councilman-elect, Phil Strawn, on his reelection, uh, his new appointment, so congratulations, Phil. Uh, I'm going to miss it, we've got, you know, maybe six meetings left. I'm definitely going to miss being around the, this part of, I'll still be around the streets, talking with people like I always have, and I enjoyed it very much. So, and, uh, their campaign was pretty clean in my district, which I really enjoyed to see. They did a great job, Tim Ames, they both filled, there was no mudslinging ever, so I'm happy about that. Uh, they are going to be mowing and paving parts of the streets in the south side of Binghamton, well, depends if it gets snow or not. So, that's supposed to start tomorrow. So I just want to make everybody wear, be careful out there, even if it does snow, or if it doesn't snow, there will be some construction work going on on the south side of Binghamton tomorrow, so, yes, get that, that's great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And the Councilwoman Livingston.
Mr. President, um, I want to start by thanking the sewage treatment plant staff who continue to come to these meetings. Honestly, I don't even know why at this point, because this body obviously is uninvolved with the, uh, with this process of privatization that blooms over their heads, and, you know, at this point, you know, we're coming, coming into the holiday season, it would really, you know, be a nice gift for the holidays, the plant staff being able to know whether they got to pinch their pennies because they're potentially going to lose their jobs, or whether they can celebrate like people all over the city might. It's, um, I just, I just don't get it, you know? Um, it's like, I don't know what they, what they did to, to slight the city, what they did to deserve this. Um, and, you know, some people here will, some of my colleagues will say that they, they care about the workforce, but, you know, they're, they're crying out to us, and they have been for months, and I, I just don't see how you can care about them and, and continue to stonewall, to stonewall them. And, and to say that this body couldn't, you know, well, we don't know anything, to say that this body can't, you know, put pressure on parties involved to furnish us with information is, is completely disingenuous. There's absolutely a litany of things that we could do to, uh, provide plant staff and members of the public with clarity on this. But, you know, when, well, I guess when you have the majority, you just, you don't have to listen to the key terms on it. And I think that's, that's unfortunate, because I, I've heard about it constantly for months, not just from people who bother to show up, but from people whose doors I showed up to, um, from people contacting me from seven different directions, not just in the city of Binghamton. I'm getting contacted by people from all over the valley who, you know, have now discovered their connection to this facility over the course of months of, uh, of press coverage, you know, to people who I had no idea that I was tied into the sewage treatment plant. You know, I thought over here at Court Dickinson, I was, you know, I didn't know where it went when I flushed. Well, they know now. Um, talking about this hasn't meant anything all these months, hearing it from the plant staff, or hearing it from us, hearing it from members of the public, so it's not going to mean anything, anything more now, but I'm just going to keep saying it, you know, we deserve answers. Everyone deserves answers. Buying a house, and, you know, I'm, I'm wondering what, you know, what that's going to mean. And I, people tell me they're built for that 26% this year, and they were, they had no idea it was happening, and, you know, seniors looking over there, they're scared, they don't know what's coming. And, and it doesn't seem like, oh, oh, okay, well, it is 0% increase next year, but, you know, the bottom half is 20 years, so, you know, you can, you can flatten it out for a year, but you've got to pay the bill. You can't spend so much money and not have to pay for it eventually. So, I would encourage my colleagues to, uh, act in a, in a majority fashion, to, uh, push on the controller, to, uh, come up with a three- to five-year projection of rate increases, so that homeowners, renters, business owners all over the, the city, and, you know, maybe some of that information would be valuable to people all across the valley, so that they can budget. Um, and, uh, I guess, I'm, I'm, this, this whole, uh, outside review process, I think it just diminishes this, this body. I think it diminishes the city. I think it's, uh, you know, certainly you can, you can win an election with that, but there's a cost to it. You know, there's, uh, it damages the public trust in public institutions. I mean, I get it, you know, my, my opponent and, and, you know, all the supporters, you know, pulled out all the stops to, you know, to defeat me, and that's fine. Like, you know, there, elections come and elections go, but, you know, I don't think you realize the cost, the real cost of doing something like this. You know, that it takes so much work to build up trust in public institutions, because, well, I mean, as, as Shama talks about, you know, there, she, she kind of represents the, the fully other end of the spectrum, where, you know, a lot of people just have zero trust for public institutions categorically. But I think there are a lot of people who want to believe, like, huh, that public institutions can, can serve the people. Um, and it takes a lot of work to build up that trust. And doing something like this, uh, diminishes it in a big way, awfully quickly, in a way that it's going to be hard to read down. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Where do you want to go?